That have previously been transferred to the Lanes Run Business Park. So, we transferred all that money when the Phase Two expansion was done. We had money left over from Phase Two, that's covering our match on Phase Three. So, we did not have to contribute any additional general fund dollars for these Lanes Run Business Park expenses. The next sheet is just kind of a table and there's a lot of notes at the bottom. You've got all the notes that show you for each department what's been funded. This is more of the smaller capital things. I won't get into every single one. General is IT, some IT needs that we have that are one-time expenses. Building inspection and code, the forty-seven thousand is some maintenance that needs to be done to the one-twenty-five West Clinton Building where building electrical and code reside. You'll see we've deferred any renovations to Station One until we get a little closer to EMS moving out and deciding what exactly we're doing with Station One after they move out. So, we've deferred that. Police Department, the one-oh-seven, seven-eight-one, it's a lot of technology replacements and upgrades. Ten thousand for the Sallyport floor. And it's a safety hazard with it being slippery, it needs to be renovated. And twenty thousand for the server room HVAC to better regulate the temperature. They've had a lot of trouble with the HVAC in that building and keeping the server room regulated. Public Works, there is a dump truck. So, we do have one dump truck. He did ask for two and a gripper truck and a tractor. We are deferring those to future budgets. But we did do the, do the two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for a single dump truck. And the purchase in fiscal year twenty-four, this is what Connie talked about during her committee update where we're going to try to get the pavement done with the run-in shed out of this year's budget, some money that he had left over. And then he was also able to purchase a lawnmower with some money that he had left over in his equipment budget. Parks and Recreation, I believe I forwarded you all, if I didn't forward you all that budget already, I will make sure I forward it. I know I sent it to the Finance Committee. But that's, the one-seventy-two, three-forty is what Parks requested for capital projects. That's our half, the city would also, the county would also contribute one-seventy-two. The five-hundred-and-seventy thousand, I'll let the mayor and Devin elaborate more if they want to. But we met with Judge Covington and he was talking about, he's already got quotes for projects at Great Crossing Park for pickleball courts and tennis courts that totaled about five-hundred-and-seventy thousand. So, what this is, was an effort to say, okay, you're improving your county park. We're committing five-hundred-and-seventy thousand and our focus will be Marshall Park. So, we've each put five-hundred-and-seventy thousand in our budget, but they would handle the Great Crossing project, we would handle the Marshall Park project. So, I'll let the mayor, Devin, if they want to elaborate on that.
And I'll explain that. The idea was that, one is that i- it's mainly a, a update of, of, of actual things that we should have been doing years ago. And if you haven't seen where Marshall Park does not have any restrooms. And when they have tournaments coming in, and I happened to go by and, and surveyed the tournament and lots, lots of people coming in and doing that. And so, it will be a shame for people coming into this city. And this is what I call a quality of life improvement. And there will be more to come later on because I think that we have not done a good job of actually doing that. So, this is the first step and we're going to look at taking one park at a time and trying to improve that and trying to improve our quality of life. So, that's be one thing with restrooms and we even, I can say that we were looking at possibly with provision is actually putting restrooms down there because it's not being one slated for the new Farmers Market provision. And that is used by this city a lot when people come in for the Festival of the Horse and other downtown. So, i- it's more or less a quality of life improvement for the city.
Yeah, Stacy, I'll reiterate, reiterate one thing. That, that five-seventy is a placeholder to kind of, you know, reserve that funding on equal par to the commitments that the county's got quotes for. So, that'll all come back to the council, of course, in the future. So, once that goes out to bid for those restrooms, it would come back to the council. If there would be a proposal to improve the parking lots there at Marshall, that would, it would all come back to the council for approval. So, there's still room for conversation about what improvements are most needed. But I think, I think everyone agrees that, that restroom facilities at, at a heavily-used park is something that's important.
And I think lighting, yeah, lighting was one of the things they talked about because we applied for a grant and didn't get it.
Right.
That was the other third major one.
And on Marshall Field, softball field number one, and I've spoken with some with the, with Parks and Rec that want to move all softball fields out to Great Crossings Park. And that's great, but when we don't have enough fields and the school system takes fields for girls softball, you know, that's a problem. And we've got lights at Marshall Park that are a danger right now. We need to work on getting those lights replaced.
That was one of the ones we discussed. Like I said, we applied for the grant and we didn't get it, but.
But we're, we're going to continue that avenue with that. But we thought that the restroom is, is by far, right now.
Oh, I agree.
A, a, we, something we gotta have. And then, of course, the, the parking lot and, and we did talk about the lights and then getting that improved too. We're trying to do it one park at a time.
Dispatch, again, those are covered under Fund Thirteen. I won't get into all the technical stuff because I'm sure I'll say something wrong. But I do know seventy-five thousand is a one-time fee for the cloud migration that that software company charges. The remaining is, once they migrate off of that server, they obviously have other data that's not CAD-related remaining that they'll have to make sure they have a host for. So, there's some cost associated with that. And then a small LED tower light upgrade at Sadieville Tower. Stormwater, again, as the mayor already mentioned, the four-ninety-two, seven-fifty is just carrying over the Clayton Broadway project. I think we're still working through some, some of the, I'll say the legal stuff. But we'll be bidding that out and, and that'll, most of the construction will take place in next fiscal year. So, we're just carrying that over. Council had already approved that in this year's budget. And the mayor requested that we put in two-hundred-and-fifteen thousand for the stormwater utility development fee contract. So, we've, we've had that contract from Strand for a while. The price has been updated a couple of times. So, that is something that at some point the mayor will be bringing for your consideration. But he wanted to go ahead and have a placeholder in the budget for that. You'll notice in the defer column, there's a four-hundred-thousand dollar defer. That's the street sweeper that we kind of just keep deferring to see if we do get a stormwater utility fee because that could pay for the street sweeper. That's one of the things that it can pay for amongst many others. Yeah.
So, if we put this carryover for the utility fee development and we approve the budget, does that mean we're approving a utility fee?
No, you'll be brought a contract to approve.
It'll come back.
You would still have to approve the contract with Strand.
Okay.
Just the funding is there.
Okay.
It, it wouldn't have to be used if the council doesn't approve the amendment to the contract.
Okay.
Yeah, you'll, there'll be another step for approval there. It won't be just that. And as we mentioned, this deferral. And then the cemetery, there is two-hundred-thousand dollars in there for land acquisition. We're looking at an area that needs to be expanded. Right now, I think we're looking at where the old pool was. There are land and water conservation fund restrictions on that property. To get rid of those restrictions, you have to purchase another piece of property that's of equal value. Doesn't have to be the same acreage, but it has to be equal value and you transfer the restrictions. So, that process actually takes a long time with DLG. So, we wanted to go ahead and put that money in there. We're looking at three to five years with needing additional space. So, we want to get started on that process. So, that's capital. Those are the big ones. And if you have any questions on operating, I'm sorry, capital. If you have any questions on op, capital, I'll answer those, otherwise we'll move to operating. Okay. Next slide. Some of the operating requests. I try not to ask for much, but there is a software that will help manage leases and bonds. And one of the things I know we're looking at, we already have some leases with tower space. One of the things we've been talking about wanting to do is lease out some space on some of those new towers we built. And this software manages everything. It will help keep those schedules. It will help with the disclosures needed for the audits. It will help with developing the schedule if I don't have one. Sometimes we have an old lease that comes up and, and I have to kind of create it from the ground up. So, this would help me do that and help me to be able to do that myself rather than just having to rely on the auditors to do that. Keep that separation of independence where I'm creating the schedules and they're auditing the schedules. So, it helps maintain leases. Obviously, right now, we utilize Enterprise for vehicle leases. You know, we talked about last year, we thought about leasing through a dealer. But because of the accounting requirements, I wasn't comfortable because Enterprise has it down to a science. With a software like this, if we wanted to lease vehicles from a dealer, then this would help me establish those lease schedules and maintain them. And it does like the accounting entries, it does a lot of things that take a lot of that high-level accounting. General technology budget is fifty thousand. That is just for general computer replacements that come up through the year. Any, I think there's a lot of firewalls and other things that I don't know the names of that we have that are in there. And we gave the Affordable Housing Office a ten-thousand-dollar operating budget. We talked about that a little bit at the work session. One of the things I know Council member Allen asked for was, I think we had put thirty-eight-hundred in there and he talked about bumping it to ten thousand. So, the mayor chose to do that. That will be split with the county because that is an inter-local department. The Police Department, just something we wanted to make note of. You will see we have Departments two-eleven through two-fourteen that we set up for some of those Department of Justice grants. All of those grants are personnel-only now. So, they have asked that the operating line item that they can use to pay for conferences and supplies be moved back into their two-ten just for ease of tracking. So, when they run an expense report, it's all right there. So, you're going to just see that those moved from two-twelve back to two-ten. And when you're looking at two-ten, you'll see grant expense JAG, grant expense VOKA for those departments. They just asked that they be moved back. Again, the body worn camera installment, we added two-hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand for that. We did defer the drone as a first responder program. We'll look at that mid-year or in a future budget. That was a thirty thousand a year program. Just kind of wanted to learn a little bit more about it, let it go through Police Committee. I don't think they'd talked to you a whole lot about it yet, even though we had some documentation on it. Once it's gone through Police Committee and you all have discussed it more than we can talk about adding that. One of the things the Fire Department requested that we have added in is a cell phone stipend. Police Department receives this. If they do not have a city phone, we're, they're given like forty-five dollars a month towards their personal cellphone as part of payroll or taxed on it. And a lot of first responders now are having to use their phones for apps that we've set up. And Fire has requested that they receive the same compensation as police. So, we've got that in the budget. But just so you know, we are going to look at a, make sure we have a citywide cellphone policy in place just before we implement everything, just to kind of look at it. But if they get a city cellphone, they do not also get this. It's if you don't have a city cellphone. And right now, police only and we're adding Fire. City Engineer, this is just some general. He has ninety-eight thousand in professional services. This includes traffic calming studies, traffic control striping plan, Main Street brick design and some other small project engineering. And then he, we put in fifty thousand to continue the sidewalk cost-sharing program for our residents. Inter-local budgets, the ambulance department cost increased by about eight-hundred-and-thirty thousand. Again, I can email those inter-local budgets out to you all. And you'll see the way their line items are. It's, it's mainly in the benefits and their treasurer said she would look into it and let me know if there was anything to look into. But that was mainly on the benefits and they're also purchasing two new ambulances. So, we have to pay half of those. Other county departments increased or decreased minimally, there were not big changes. Community service and nonprofit organizations, I'm not going to go into every single one. Those are all found in Department ten, five-ten. So, I'll let you look through those. But a couple of ones that I wanted to point out. We had two new requests the mayor chose to fund, Unexpected Blessings. They work with at-risk populations that, providing help for expectant mothers. It's not, they're not covering adoption fees or anything like that. It is to provide supplies, assistance for whether it be high school students, incarcerated population, anyone who's at risk, who's become pregnant and to assist them with some expenses as they navigate that situation. Still Waters, I'll let you, the mayor, Devin, elaborate on what they do. But they requested forty thousand and the mayor recommended ten thousand.
Yeah, they're, sorry, they requested thirty.
Sorry, thirty, okay.
But yeah, fairly new organization, but they support at-risk youth. And I think a lot of what they're aimed at is kind of covering that gap where, where kids graduate and they've got good support. And then they have that, you know, age eighteen to twenty-two period where they need additional assistance. So, but it'll be, it, it's, it's a portion of what was requested. And obviously, with all of our funds, we, we require semi-annual reporting. That's a fairly new process that we're still working the kinks out on. But we'll make sure to, to work on providing updates to the council on those reports. I, I think we require semi-annual at this point.
The city airport funding and we have typically budgeted, well, it's been kind of varying over the years. In recent years, we've been budgeting about fifteen thousand in conversation with the county and Judge Covington. The mayor has chosen to increase that by twenty thousand, so we'll be contributing thirty-five. And I'll explain a little bit, but again, I know Devin can explain better. The city and county jointly appoint that board. So, there was talk about slowly coming towards more of a joint funding formula. So, I think right now, they initially had, they had requested eighty thousand from the county and twenty from the city. So, we're not going to give the airport any more money between the two of us. But if it's a hundred thousand total that they need from local government, we're going to go up to thirty-five and the county's coming down to sixty-five. Just where we, that is a jointly appointed board. So, I don't know if Devin wants to add anything else, but that was kind of the discussion and logic behind that. I know they came to the inter-local committee and gave a presentation. So, you all have that, but that's.
And some, and something else on that, you know, he reported as to actually what they do and as to the services they not only provide for the county but also to the city. You're talking about flying in supplies to Toyota, but other industries around here that they deal with. So, you know, they help the city as much as they help in the county. So, I wanted to make sure that we do our part to make sure that we are trying to help with funding their needs on that prospect.
And it's supposed to go, can you clarify that again on the city?
For the city airport funding?
What's the divide?
So, we currently fund fifteen. So, we're in fiscal year twenty-five. We're adding twenty to that and we will be funding thirty-five thousand. And the, the conversation was that the county would drop theirs to sixty-five thousand. So, between the two entities, we're not giving them additional money. The county's not going to, we're not coming up and the county's staying up. It was about coming closer to each other since it's a jointly-appointed board.
Thank you.
So, I hope that makes sense. They're still getting a hundred thousand, the same hundred thousand. We're just changing how much each jurisdiction contributes. And again, you'll see as you go through the other, again, the others, I'm not going to go through each one individually where we have recommended increasing. And we sat down with Judge Covington and their treasurer and went through and talked about balancing those out. We didn't give any entity more than they asked for other than the airport. But there were some where if the county was giving forty, and they had asked for fifty from us, we like dropped ours to forty. So, we kept it kind of equal on that. So, there was one I know that they, we gave them thirty last year, they asked for fifty this year. So, we, we gave them forty to match kind of what the county does. So, you'll see those. And if you have any questions about any of those individual applications, we'll be happy to share that information. Parks and Recreation, their operating expense request increased by two-hundred-and-five thousand, seven-eighty-one. And Ed Davis Center is funded solely by the city and requested an increase of eleven thousand, nine, three, ninety-nine. A lot of that's going to be personnel-related expenses. And planning and zonings budget request increased by forty thousand, seven-thirty-eight. So, that is all of the kind of general fund, kind of the highlights that I wanted to talk about. Again, you've got the line-by-line that you can go through and feel free to email me any questions as you go through that. Special revenue funds, I do want to touch on some of those. The nine-one-one fund, we talked a lot about the CAD. Our software company that we use is kind of pushing everybody towards the cloud. They want, and it is, of course, secure, easily maintained. Our third-party tech provider doesn't have to have their hands in the server while the software company also has their hands in the server. It's a more efficient, stable, secure environment. It is a two-hundred-and-seven thousand recurring expense. Included in that is not just the cloud hosting, it's also the software maintenance agreement. I think right now, the software maintenance agreement is about ninety thousand a year. So, that, there is a little bit more in there, obviously, for cloud. The AMK Radio Tower System Maintenance Agreement, you'll remember, I think that came to you all last fall. We revised the agreement just a little bit and it pushed it from a January one start date on payment to July one. So, we will have the first full year of that fifteen-year maintenance agreement. Again, that four-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand is split equally between city and county. Phone system, phones are obviously the most important thing at nine-one-one other than CAD. They have a thirty-six thousand annual maintenance agreement that they have asked for as opposed to replacing the whole phone system. Tower crews and then they currently have a reserve balance of a million eighty-six. And if you go, I think it's to page one of your budget, you'll see on Fund thirteen, nine-one-one, it's currently showing a budgetary deficit of about ninety thousand. But we have built up a little bit of a balance due to vacancies in that department. So, it's fully covered. We still do not have to contribute any general fund dollars to nine-one-one. And at this time, we're not considering any changes to the rate that our citizens are currently paying either. Alcohol fund, we talked about that a little bit in the quarterly. But I budgeted revenues of one-point-four million, which was the data I had when I did that on Friday. And twenty-five percent of the city clerk's office salary and benefits are charged here because they serve as our ABC administrator. And then seventeen-point-two-five percent of Police Department sworn officers. I don't charge admin there or the, or the SROs or anything like that. But our sworn officers that are out enforcing those regulations are charged there. The Grant Fund, obviously, we've got carryover from any leftover grants. But just a reminder, that includes our one-point-six million that we received from Congressman Barr's office for Lexus Way and Old Oxford. Stormwater, we've talked a little bit about the capital and operating, but just wanted to point out the grand total because, again, we asked for the funding for the stormwater utility fee to be in there. The current budget for projects and maintenance and operations and a portion of our city engineer's office salary is one-point-two million dollars. And we are using general fund dollars to, to cover that. So, that entire one-million-two-sixty-four is covered by general fund currently, so. And cemetery, we already talked about when I talked about the new worker that we're reducing professional services by forty-five thousand to account for the addition of a new maintenance worker. And the next chart is just kind of a little eyeball of expenditures for the other funds. Again, the Grant Fund shows up as twenty-seven percent. It has that one-point-six million in it for the community project funding, plus some Homeland Security, Department of Justice grants. Those are in there. The ARPA funds are just carried forward. One of the things I do want to mention on ARPA, December thirty-first of twenty-twenty-four is our commitment deadline from the federal government. So, all of our ARPA funds have to be committed by the end of the year. Then we have until December thirty-first of twenty-six to actually make the payments and finish out the contracts. I do think there's a couple of small line items. It's not going to be millions, but I think there's going to be a couple of small line items where we have a little bit of extra left over from some previous things. Some things that we budgeted that just hadn't gotten spent yet. Some mall projects that we'd anticipated doing. I think the parks, I don't know if the HVAC came in lower, but I'm waiting on a final, I've got a final bill from them. So, I'm going to do a final accounting of the ARPA fund once we get past June thirtieth. And if we've got any money left over at all, then we will talk about how to commit that before December thirty-first. One of the things that we didn't put in here, and you'll see that later, but like the furniture fixtures and equipment for EMS, we were kind of given a very ballpark number from the judge on that for the new EMS station. I think that we'll hopefully have enough left over from some of these other things where we wouldn't have to add more to the general fund for that. So, that may be one of the considerations. Again, I don't include the capital projects fund in the chart because it would skew the whole thing because of the ten million for Skid City Hall. It would take up the whole chart and you wouldn't be able to see anything else. And that's it on that one. So, the last one is the general fund balance. You know, how does all of this affect, we talked about it a little bit on April work session. So, this is our general fund balance, how it's kind of looked over the last ten years. You can see back in two thousand and fifteen, we had about a thirteen-point-two million balance. We built that up for a few years. And the dip between two thousand and eighteen and two thousand and nineteen, we paid for nine-point-nine million dollars of capital projects with cash. That was our half of the radio system, tower system upgrade. And that was our half of the Lanes Run Business Park Phase Two expansion. So, that is why we had the big dip. And then since then, it's kind of rapidly increased. A lot of that has to do with a lot of the money we got from COVID. You know, we received quite a bit from ARPA, the American, I'm not going to try to get the acronym right. We had ARPA. We also had the CARES Act money, which was between two and three million that was used for first responder salaries. So, our local economy remains strong. We had quite a large influx of federal funds. So, that has helped our balance recover. And as we've talked about, we ended twenty-twenty-three with thirty-one-point-one million of reserves. If we spend cash on City Hall, we would end this fiscal year with twenty million because we would transfer the money at the end of this year for City Hall to the capital projects. And then if this budget is adopted as presented or as proposed, that four-point-three million deficit would come out and we would end twenty-twenty-five with fifteen-point-seven million. Again, if we choose to finance any of these capital projects, that would make a difference. We would spread that cost over future budgets. So, the last thing is just kind of that all-encompassing, future items for consideration. We just wanted you to know there are things that are still out there that we need more information on, that we weren't able to include in the budget. But there'll be conversations for the next year. So, new debt service for capital projects. Again, if we choose to finance anything, rather than pay for it with cash, we would obviously have to account for the debt service. Land acquisitions, Lexus Way, Old Oxford and potentially the Regional Economic Development Project. We talked about ARPA fund already. And the EMS furniture fixtures and equipment, that was something Judge Covington sent us kind of a last-minute email on that they, they hadn't included that. So, we may have some ARPA money left over that we can use for that. So, we're not going to, we're not going to add anything for eff, eff, and e until I do that final accounting of ARPA. And if we've got enough to use that, then we won't have to use it for something else. And again, there's been a lot of conversation about additional Parks and Rec and quality-of-life projects at the inter-local committee level between the mayor and the judge. Obviously, what we have in here for Marshall Park is a first step towards that. But there's a lot of other things out there that have been discussed. So, we'll continue to talk about those items. That is all I have, so unless you have more questions. Yes.
I know that slide, that at the very top of that slide, it says future items for consideration. I know, gosh, just within the past thirty to forty-five days, we had discussed trying to move forward with getting appraisals for the property, I think, two property owners.
Yes. Devin and I have talked about that. We're trying to find money in our current budget if we can to do that. I think to contract that before the end of the year is what we talked about.
Yeah. And mayor, do you want to speak to, the mayor set up meetings with those two property owners. So, we've, we've been in those conversations and we, Stacy has pulled together the professional services funding to get that, the appraisals done within this fiscal year. So, when it says future items for consideration, there's no, there's obviously nothing in the budget for that acquisition, but those conversations are happening.
But have the, are the appraisals already being done or they?
They're, they're in the works, but they're not complete.
Do we have any id, I mean, I know we, this is the budget that's been presented. I get that. That's a future item, I get that as well. Do we have any idea when those appraisals will come back? Do we have any idea when those appraisals will come back to us? I mean, are we thinking late summer, early fall?
I wasn't given a timeline. I, I can follow up. I mean, I, I reached out within the week from the meeting where, where that was discussed. So I mean, I don't, I don't see a reason why they wouldn't be complete, but I can provide an update at the next meeting.
So this, this item, just thinking ahead, because I know we're going to be voting on this budget in the weeks ahead. And obviously, that land acquisition, if this council decides to move forward, is not part of this budget. I totally get that. But if, if the appraisals come back after the budget has been approved, we can always make a budget amendment if the council decides to move forward.
It, it would be like any other purchase that's, that's unbudgeted. So the municipal order would just include that budget line that indicates that, that the costs would be included in a budget amendment.
Okay.
And if Stacy mentioned, and Devin mentioned, I have set up meetings, I've already talked with one of the two owners, and the next one is, I'm hoping to talk with him on this Friday to let him know where we are, where we stand, what our ideas are. And then, like I said, moving forward, try to get the appraisal in, and that, and after we do all that, you know, revisit this at a later time.
Can I just do a point of clarification? My apologies, I said if this council decides to move forward, if this council and mayor decide to move forward. I apologize for that, that was a slip, I apologize.
That's okay. All right.
I think the others.
And I might have missed something, and I need to go back to the proposed capital expenditures.
Yes.
And where it says funded for twenty-five and deferred under the fire, can you, I missed that. The sixty-four, nine-hundred.
I may not have said it because it doesn't look like I've got it. I'm trying to remember off the top of my head. I know we gave them thirty thousand for additional training center improvements. And I know we gave them eighteen thousand, I want to say eighteen thousand six hundred for handheld mics. Off the top of my head, do you remember what the other one was that I felt you was in there? There were small equipment purchases, just, there's like some sawls, a tripod. Those were the things that were in there. Currently, we're deferring the purchase of a side-by-side and a trailer. The trailer, Tim and I have talked about, they have, they're waiting on one trailer to come in. Then they'll have two that can be surplus. So we're talking about them potentially selling those and coming back with, if they've got enough funds from selling those two that, that can go towards the purchase of the third one, so we're just kind of waiting on that. But the biggest bulk of that, the thirty thousand, is additional training center improvements. I know eighteen thousand is the handheld mics. AMK or Harris no longer supports the mics that they have, so they're getting new mics for all their radios.
And the cell phone stipends is if we vote on this, whatever.
Yeah, it'll be in there.
It will be in.
Yeah, that's under the operating, since that'll be a recurring thing.
Mayor?
Yeah.
For future items for consideration, does this, I guess we're like not mentioning a possibility of doing a study for a new fire?
We have not mentioned that, but that's something we can go down the road with, yes.
Yeah, I, I just was surprised that it wasn't on the future items for consideration. I realize it would be a big project, but it could be implementally looked at, I guess. I thought it, I just thought it might be there.
Yeah, we, we start what we call immediate needs at this point right now.
Okay.
I'm not saying that, that's not important, that's not something that, you know, we, we want to forget about. It just, now, we were just putting items in that we know that we could probably get done.
More quickly.
Get done, yes.
Okay.
Can I just, I want to say one more thing. Since you were saying that, I just feel like, I know it's going to be future, but we really do need to look into the fire inspector because where they're losing so many people for retirement and stuff, and I know in our fire committee meeting, it's something that's very beneficial. I just want to, hopefully, we can get to that sooner, way sooner than later. Just want to put that on the record.
Yep, yes, go ahead.
Stacy, does this include City Hall FFNE?
We have in our contingency, if you recall, I think we had a total contingency of either five-hundred or seven-fifty. Don't remember the number off the top of my head, but if you'll remember, we have kind of one lump sum number. If we, if we have any additional future change orders, whatever's left over would go towards FFNE. So, if we get to the end of that project, we don't anticipate using all our contingency, but if we used all the contingency, then we're going to use the furniture we have right now. For, unless there's like AV equipment, well, obviously, we will look at, there will have to be some AV equipment and security equipment and those kinds of things, but you know, desks and stuff, we would make do with what we've got, but.
Okay, any other questions?
Mayor, can you just review the process from here for approving the budget?
So, I believe that, at this point in time, correct me if I'm wrong, once we get to this, you know, I, I could look at anything else at this point. I believe Stacy will come back and what, what, the date, timeline?
We have one week until first reading, so it's a very, because of that Memorial Day.
It's tight.
It's tight. We normally, we normally have a couple of weeks. So, I'll be working on my budget, budget ordinance this week.
Okay.
So obviously, if you all have anything you want to express to the mayor, do so quickly. But we'll have first reading on May twentieth, and then we won't have another meeting until June tenth, and that would be second reading.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, Stacy, like always, you are worth your wait and go. I think I'll keep you around at least for another day.
There you go.
All right, next on the agenda. Well, I'll tell you what, do I make a motion that we take a break here?
Got it, motion.
Second.
Okay, motion is made, properly second, other questions and or comments? All those in favor of the motion, get up.
Okay.
Just give us a board.
Make sure your mic's turned off.
I'm going to run away. I'm gonna run away.